It is six thirty.
Sorry.
Oh, you can hear me now.
You can't hear.
Good. So we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order because we've got lots to do this evening. The first order of business always is public comment and quick reminder that especially in this budget season, we are, we have a second public comment following the presentation of the latest budget numbers. So you're welcome to speak now or after we see that. I would encourage you if you have public comment that is not budget related, now would be a good time to to share it. And if you want to wait until after the budget presentation, you're certainly welcome to. With that, is there anyone in the room or online who would like to offer public comment? Being no one in the room, I'll call, I see one hand raised online from Timothy's iPhone. If you can go ahead and take yourself off mute and introduce yourself for the audience.
Hello. It's Tim. Thank you all. And this is actually budget related. I wanted to say thank you for the FAQ that's up online and super helpful. I was a little bit concerned about. Sorry. Two things, well, two comments in the FAQ. One of them says if a school receives the merger grant, their schools do not qualify for any of the new weighted categories for having a small school. And then another comment further down says it was not apparent that Roxbury, one of the smallest schools in the state, would not qualify for the small school wage because of the past merger. I just want to make a comment that I feel like that is a major flaw in the law. I think it's deeply unfortunate. I feel like it puts the two laws kind of counter to each other. And that the new law that's in place is going to really push back against and maybe even do damage to the previous law that went through and that we were a part of. And that's it for my thought. Thank you all.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
And just as a reminder for everybody, the board really appreciates public comment and takes it in. It's our practice not to respond back to public comments because the whole purpose of public comment is for us to hear from the community and use what we hear to in our thinking and in our decision making, which in some cases, although it's probably not remain tonight, the public comment we hear doesn't necessarily address something that's on the agenda. But then even if it does, we can weigh those thoughts and those comments in when we do our deliberations, but don't necessarily respond or it's our practice not to respond in the moment. And I think with that, we can close public comment for now and move on to the consent agenda. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to pass the consent agenda.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Or questions about it? Okay, all those in favor?
I have.
Any opposed? Okay, and just a brief bit of context for those following along at home, the consent agenda is a bundle of things that are generally not very contentious and pretty typical to board work. So we just bundle them all together and take care of them. But if there is something for discussion, any board member can pull one out, an item out for discussion, which we didn't need to do tonight. So moving right along to our first order of board business, we'd like to invite Jody Emerson of the Central Vermont Career Center to come up and present on your fabulous school and district.
Yes. Thank you. Hold on one second, Jody, can you little or minimize the squares on the side? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, Jody.
Hi, Jody.
Hi.
Welcome.
Smite, you guys get the first go of this. I think that happened last year too. So every December, the Central Vermont Career Center is working on our budget, just like you are. And we have the opportunity to visit all of the sending school boards and make this presentation. So this is like hot off the presses today, literally, because the finance committee met last night and our full board won't see this until Monday. So you're actually in advance of our, the CBCC SD board. So this will be helpful for when I'm ready for that.
Good practice.
Yeah. Every photo in here is of our students this year. So you might recognize some students in here. That's one of my favorite parts about sharing what happens at the Central Vermont Career Center, where you do send students along with five other sending schools in our region, and then some students from outside our region do access as well. And so we get the opportunity to prepare students for a variety of careers in like really intensive programming. That's four hours every day. So they come to us, they grab breakfast on their way in this year. At eight thirty, they're in their program and they're with that program instructor until twelve thirty each day. And then some of them with licenses leave and some of them stay and go get lunch in the Spalding Cafeteria and then climb onto the bus and come on back here today. This year, we actually have board goals. Last year when we came, we hadn't done that yet. We hadn't done the work for that. So it's really great to be able to share those for the first time. The first one is around long term planning and the best news for us and for our programming is the plan for a state of the art career center in 2028, so fall of 2028. That's not in this year's budget though, so. Right? We're looking at, last year we had four hundred and eight applicants for our programs and we took two hundred and eight. So 200 students who wanted access didn't get it. And that's, that's been really hard. And each year we've seen our applicants grow, the number of applicants we have. And each, so thus each year we're turning away more students than we have before. And it's really hard to do that, knowing that they all deserve an opportunity to to do that hands on work. We also want, we have a program quality committee and they're working to provide equitable, safe, rigorous programming and just make sure that we're more inclusive in our curriculum and instruction. We also have an equity scholar in residence this year who's been an amazing asset to our staff especially and has also been teaching some citizenship related work in each program and talking about OSHA history and in connection with Berry history, a lot of the the OSHA rules actually came out of Berry, which is not really a surprise with the granite industry there. And then we're, as I think most boards are, except maybe at budget season, we're looking at ways to engage our community. And of course, our community is 18 towns. So it's really hard to get our information out to everyone and to also gather information and feedback back. We rarely have folks at our board meetings. And Orca has been there this year and maybe that's getting, reaching a few more folks, but it, it feels like there's a lot of work to do to get the community more involved. So some of the charges that I've been given this year as a result of these goals is to develop and implement a full day educational program that that meets the needs of our students in conjunction with that new center. We did really look at, can we go to full day with academics next year? And that would have been a twenty five point eight percent increase on our budget. And, and knowing what all of you are already struggling with, to put that on top of what you're already trying to deal with in your budgets, didn't seem appropriate or fair. We've also concerned about being able to find licensed teachers to fill those positions. And what does it do if we're, we're taking them away from some of our sending schools, for example? And then we're continuing always to try to enhance the skills for our students to be ready for the workforce wherever they're going. So the reasons I've already sort of addressed this, that we don't want to keep turning away students, but we don't have the space. Last year, you may have heard, we tried to open a welding program in a partnership with an industry in Berry. And because the space that they had available to us was too small, we were not given that permission from the state. So we're seeking actively that space for next year. We have applicants for welding next year. And we have a teacher who's in the interview process. So we may be able to hire them in January to start building that program for us. So we're really excited about that. And we're, we're just looking for ways to be creative and meet the needs of more people. I included the mission statement that we have here for the career center. It's been one that has been around for a long time and I inherited it. This is my third year there. And I love our tagline, education that works. It's so much fun to see that everywhere. I have with me both our program of studies. I have several copies. And last year's annual report because our current ones in draft process. So for anyone who wants those, I will put those copies with Jill. For you. This is actually, a lot of this slideshow from here forward is very similar to last year. We just made a copy and then updated some of the numbers. And there's actually a couple slides that aren't updated yet because the information isn't in for us yet. So this is talking about what do we look at when we're making a budget? And it's the same thing that your board looks at. And as far as resources, what do you have for qualified staff? What do you, what are you coming, coming out of negotiations with? What do you need for supplies? What, what is best going to support the students? For us, how much is it going to cost to have OSHA training? Because in the past, we had someone who did that training onsite, who was one of our staff and that person retired. So then we had to kind of contract out for that. What does it look like if one of our staff leaves and we need to fill that position and and maybe can't find a qualified applicant as what happened with plumbing and heating last year? So we, we hired one of our permanent subs to ask an emergency teacher license, but they didn't have the plumbing and heating background. So we contracted with BHB to get someone who did have that. And that partnership has lasted through this year and has been phenomenal. Every student in plumbing and heating that took the apprenticeship exam passed the apprentice exam last year. So very exciting. And, and the partnership with BHB has been wonderful. So the board set these parameters in November when we met. So they asked us to continue thinking forward to what does it look like for FY29? If we have that new building and we are full day with academics, what does it take to build up to that so that we successfully are ready for that? They wanted us to explore opportunities for collaboration across our sending schools. Are there places, are there things that you have that we can, that are pipelines to us, but also things that we can work a little more collaboratively to support? So that we have students that maybe can access a program here if they can't come to us or somewhere else. And those are things that we need to discuss. And it's also part of the comprehensive local needs assessment, which we do every two years for our Perkins funding. They wanted to think about what the programming a little differently. So this year we did, I'm going to forget what we call it, but a program analysis and basically figured out how many students do we need to break even in that? And sometimes the break even costs of programming like automotive or welding, for example, needs more students than we can actually legally have in a program for numbers based on state law. And so other programming like digital media arts or exploratory, where we can have more students because it's not as dangerous. And then there's not as high cost of equipment. Those are the areas where we can kind of offset those more expensive programs. And so looking at the configuration and figuring out ways to make sure that we can sort of offset that. And the, the board was really generous and said that we could increase between sixteen and eighteen percent, but not twenty five point eight percent, just my wish list. These are very similar to last year that like, we're looking at our class sizes, where are things going well? Where's, where are we struggling? We know we don't have enough space at Spalding High School. And so where can we expand? Where can we hold that welding program? What, what do we need to do to build that facility? We have, as you know, we have a base funding rate and then we take a percentage of that and throw it into a really complicated formula to figure out our tuition. And we just got word last Friday that it might be thirteen thousand sixty three. Maybe I think that came through at like four o'clock on Friday.
Always does.
So our updated numbers are a result of that a little bit. So that did help our, our percentage increase. You all know that the health insurance benefits are going up quite substantially. We have liability insurances that are increased. Negotiated contract may increase quite a bit. So a variety of things that just cost more than they always have. And of course, we're buying lumber, which costs more and and tools that cost more than they used to. So we do anticipate some salary increases. We're hopeful that we're going to have a negotiated agreement soon, but we do not have that yet. Other things that we've already talked about in there, our FTEs have steadily increased, but we're at the point now where they're going to reach our capacity and level out. So even though we've seen that increase that we've been able to apply and kind of help cut down the total costs of tuition, we're, we're getting to the point where they're going to flatline. This one is just the enrollment that we've had in the last two years. And you'll notice that there's different headcounts, sometimes over the amount of what we actually have in the program. And that's because of co-op students who are working and they're in the program one day a week. We, co-op is running a little different this year in that it's happening across different days. So students are in our center at different days instead of all together in the same day. And their instructor of record is their program instructor. So it might be the automotive teacher. It might be the electrical teacher. It is not the co-op coordinator. He coordinates, but does not have the right to grade students. And so the the program instructors really need to see the students. One thing you might notice on there is that our design and fabrication program, which was brand new in twenty FY23, had two students last year, or yeah, it says three, but we only had two students complete the program last year. We have five students in it now. We have no applicants in our first round, unfortunately, and we have over 200 applicants already for first round applications that opened November sixteenth and closed December twenty second. I did tell you already that we have welding applicants. We have well over 20 applicants for welding. So we're probably going to swap those programs. This slide has not changed from last year because I only have projected tuition from four other centers right now. So the two I have at the top, Patricia Haniford, looks like they're going to be right around thirty thousand in their tuition. Southwest is going to be about twenty seven thousand. Stafford Technical Center, which is right there in the middle, is going to be twenty one, just over twenty one thousand. We're going to be just over nineteen thousand. That's our projection right now, based on the numbers we have. And Riverbend is just under eighteen thousand. So those are the only ones that I have for next year, but the, the chart I expect to to be about the same, that we're going to be in the same location on that comparatively to other tech centers. So our anticipated tuition is nineteen thousand four hundred and twenty three. If we put it through that whole complicated formula, some of that comes directly to us, the on behalf payment from the state, and then we bill the remaining tuition to the school district. So it would be eight thousand fifty eight per FTE, which is on that six semester average. And we anticipate that Montpeliers is a little over twenty six FTEs next year. That's just a chart to kind of look at where, where are we spending the money? A lot of you probably do that in your budget presentations as well. And thankfully, as in all of ours, it should, the majority of it should be going towards instruction and education. These are some of our revenue sources and we also have Perkins funding a grant, which is about two hundred and fifty thousand each year that we get. Sometimes we are lucky enough to get some time grant funds. This year, we also got twenty four thousand in unexpected gear grant funds to renovate a mobile home. And we're still waiting for that mobile home to show up from the states for our building trades program to work on and renovate. And then we'll sell it and hand the twenty four thousand, if we make that much off of it, back to the state and put the rest into our building trace program. I think that's everything. Jill, did I miss anything?
Can you just explain, Jody, because I think we have some new board members since the last time you presented on the budget, how it works with ballot language and things like that?
The good question. I removed the ballot because it was last year's ballot and this year's is different. We, basically the budget goes out, do, do you approve the total amount for the career center? Which is somewhere between four and five million total for our, our center. And so it'll have that amount on there. And if the voter and everybody gets that all across all eighteen towns, they also will vote for one at large member this year. Washington Central's at large member is up for renewal. Even though they just got appointed last year by the electorate, it was, one year was left on that term that they were appointed to previously. So that person will be up for election. So we'll have two items, the, the amount of the budget, which if approved by our voters, and all of the ballots go together and they all travel to Berry and they all get counted together in Berry about a week after town meeting day. Because we give the town clerks time to pull that all together. And if it is approved, then you are responsible for your share. And it comes out of that amount of your budget. And so we try to be very clear that this is not, this is what you're already anticipating this in your budget. Washington Central is anticipating it. Harwood is anticipating it. So it's not above and beyond the monies that you're already asking for in your budgets. But it's anticipated within and that their approval means that you're, you're going to pay your bill that you get from us. Is that what you're asking? Yeah.
That, that last part seems really key for everybody to understand that even though we would be voting on it, that specific budget separate from the school district budget.
Yeah.
It doesn't mean that then there is another cost.
Right.
It is already included in our school district budget.
Right. What it does mean though, is if mine passes and one of my sending schools doesn't, they're still liable for that amount in there. So they, the cuts have to come somewhere else. They can't say, oh, we're just not going to pay the career center.
Good point.
Yeah.
Yep. Do members of the board have other questions for Jody?
I just need to clarify, so if the town votes.
Not to pass that particular part of the voting pieces. What then? The kids can still go to the center, but the town has to come up with the money.
We won't actually know.
School budget has to come up.
We won't actually know if they, if a specific town, because they're commingled. So we have no idea what town supported or didn't support the career center. We just get the overall tally from the eighteen towns. Those votes are all commingled.
Then what happens if it doesn't pass?
It, we have to go back out, just like you would have to to all eighteen towns. Yeah.
And it was very intentional to have them be commingled. So it wasn't while these three towns passed it and these three didn't, it, the whole idea is it's one district, eighteen towns. We vote as one.
Did Act one twenty seven have an effect on you guys? Didn't that or?
No, our, our funding is coming up for discussion this legislative season. We have this really complicated six semester average formula and there's literally a spreadsheet worksheet that we punch numbers into and put all of our, how much does each of the, there was a slide that talked about where we get reimbursements. How much did that get reimbursed? How much is on behalf and all these things? And then it spits out a number at the bottom that tells us, here's what your tuition amount is. Our tuition is nine point seven percent higher than last year. And how much is the remaining after the on behalf? So the, it's a complicated formula. The hope, I think, out of the APA study from last year and the work that's being done across many groups to try to advocate for a different funding for CTE is some direct payment for the students we have. Because right now I have more students that I'm getting funding for. So it, it's spread out more. If I had direct funding for every single student I had, that tuition could be lowered a little bit. The hope is that that would come directly off the top sort of thing. And I guess there was some research done in before COVID twenty nineteen, where it was three percent of education funding with CTEs. I'm sure it's up a little bit now, but everybody's is up. So it may still be a three percent of that funding is CTE. And so there's going to be a lot of work done this year as a result of that study. And the legislature is kind of primed for it to see if they're going to fund us differently. But it doesn't, the Act one twenty seven doesn't impact us, except that it impacts all of you, which impacts us. If that makes sense. So anyone want annual reports or program of studies?
Can I ask you a quick question about the? Do you, do you have an idea maybe statewide or at least our towns? The number, I guess you told us a number, but the percentage of students who take, who are able to take advantage of CTE?
By state or by just by us?
I mean, I could figure it out if I did the math. He told us how many we have. I'm curious more broadly.
Students total to start this year. We're down a little bit from that. I don't know how many high school students there are.
Yeah.
And I would say I'll get ten year, eleven, ten through twelve grade, not.
Yeah.
We do have three ninth graders, I think this year, but in general, we don't.
Libby, do you know statewide? Do you ask that?
Jody, I have, I think what's is an obvious question, the when you say the nineteen thousand, that is essentially the full cost of educating one student in the, at the career center. But then the eight thousand per student, that's that eleven thousand dollar difference is because it's made up by those other sources of funding. Is that right?
Made up by that, some of it is. We get some of the funding for those students directly. And then I think the remainder of whatever your tuition is goes to you. And then we take the rest of what ours would be. So if your tuition is at twenty two thousand, I don't know what it is. I don't know what it's planning to be. And ours is nineteen. And there's a little bit of money that you would hold on. But we also, it depends also because of that six semester average. I could have thirty of your kids and you could be paying for twenty six, or I could have twenty six of your kids and you could be paid for thirty based on how it's been over the last three years.
Three years.
Correct.
Yep. So Jason has some numbers from a few years ago. He says twenty nine, a few years ago, twenty nine percent of eligible high school students participated in CTE across the straight state that was pre pandemic. So he doesn't have the numbers now. At that time, MHS was about twelve percent. Yeah, we've done another question. Sure.
I'm, I'm curious about the, the pressures. You mentioned, I'm, I'm using my paraphrasing, so I might be wrong. Like the lost leaders, right? That there are programs that cost a lot more to run and there are programs that cost a lot less to run.
Yeah.
And like within the, within the industry of CTE, if there are pressures to like, like are there more students that are interested in those lower cost programs? And so that's a way to like pop up overall CTE or, yeah.
Good question. Any program that started, we have to prove that it's high wage, high scale, high demand.
Yeah.
First. And the way that we do that is through the comprehensive local needs assessment. So last time we went through that was two years ago, because we're just starting it this year. And what I got out of my process was that welding was number one. There's an interest in diesel and auto body repair. And there's an interest in business, interestingly enough. Like I think that we, CTEs had it, then it went into high schools for a while. And now there's financial literacy, but not so much accounting and business stuff. Depending on the high school. And so when we looked at that as a center and with that CLNA team, they identified, let's move forward with that welding and also design and fabrication was part of that. Because we thought putting together something that would benefit the granite sheds because they have lots of older folks that are in them that are ready to retire. COVID unfortunately caused a huge demand for granite. And yeah, yeah, stones. Yep. And so we thought we could build that for them. And we also had a partnership planned with Norwich University. And those things didn't happen the way that we expected out of that piece, but we went that way first and then thought we'd build up welding next. And so right now we're just going to shift them. Although if the granite industry decides to step in and financially support, maybe there's a way to do both. I think we're, we're exploring industry support a lot more than we used to. I think we're, we're exploring industry support a lot more than we used to. Like, are there other ways to help fund these programs to support the workforce development?
Yeah.
Said that there's an exploratory program. Can you say more about what that is?
Yeah, so, um, most of our programming is open to eleventh and twelfth graders. If we let in someone who's younger, we have to have state permission to do that. And then explanation why. Otherwise, there's pre-tech courses. So you could have foundations, which some of the tech centers in Vermont have. Randolph Tech has one, um, which is for more for ninth graders, kind of get them familiarized with. And then tenth grade is more of an exploratory level. So students in our exploratory program have two instructors. And, um, they get some, all four of the academics from those instructors. But they also have the opportunity to get introduced to every single program that we have. And so they'll do a week-long kind of adventure where the students in those programs teach them something. And they learn some of the tools of that trade. And then they will also shadow. So they've already started shadowing a different programs. And we try to get those all in for them so they know what they want to apply for next year. There is, um, there's been a pretty healthy trend of students that are in exploratory, getting into other programs. Sometimes it can be a way to not get in, because if you aren't following safety regulations or rules. It can be obvious to the instructors when you're shadowing in their program that, uh, that student isn't listening to me. This might not be the space for them. But it is an opportunity for students to explore every single program that we have.
Does that make it less likely that we denied entry into a program if you've been? In the exploratory programs? It kind of like a?
It's on the year and it depends on the student.
Early, yeah. Right.
Yeah. Some of them, when they come in, they're, they're looking for an alternate setting, right? So something that has something that's a little more engaging for them, but they may not really be invested in exploring all their programs. Some of them, I think it surprises them how, how exciting it is to go in and explore a program they didn't think they had any interest in. And we see. We see them come in and say, these are the programs I want to go into. And then by the end of the year, they're like, actually, I'd rather go into this one. That was way more fun and I. I realize I really enjoy that. But. At the same time, we have some students who are resistant to programs that they don't think they have an interest in. And that can set them up a little bit for, for failure as far as moving on.
Yeah.
Have a quick question. Um, I'm really grateful that this pathway exists for our students. Um, the traditional forum wall classroom doesn't work for many kids. And so the fact that, you know, we have this is such an asset and. Um, I feel like, I think this is the third time I've seen you come before the board, and this is the third time you've said that we've had more demand than we have space for our programs. Which I'm sure is kind of a heartbreaker for you all when there's so much demand. And I'm hearing about this FY twenty-nine state-of-the-art facility and. Um, I'm curious about that and, and what that might look like and just sort of the development work and, and how, you know, at this point. Um, you see that possibly panning out. And then in the meantime. What's the plan? You know, in terms of like other options to kind of creatively, like I'm building partnerships to increase capacity. I'm just curious. Like, wow, there's this kind of pie in the sky and this is where you'd like to get. And like, kind of knowing along the way. How you can continue to, to build program to try to satisfy some of that demand for, for students.
Yeah, um, you could help with that. Any thinking that we can get on that would be great. But right now, I've sort of tried to do some backwards design thinking about that. And my staff has helped a little bit with that as well. And so we're thinking it does make sense in some ways to open a foundations program. And what we see when we have students that are with us from ten through twelfth grade. Is that a steady improvement and steady growth in those scales, right? So the longer we have them, we are seeing improvements. I've heard my teachers say that. And so if we do open a foundations program, does that mean that we can split our exploratory? Um, and one of the things that I talked about last year was our new EMS two program where students are working on their paramedic license, right, or certification. And so if we have a kid come in and we set the stage for them. In foundations as a ninth grader, and that's where they want to go. And we have a s- health sciences exploratory after that. And then move them along that pathway. That might strengthen those pieces for them. We do, we are gonna need to look at sites outside of our building. And we are thinking about right now baking and culinary got, before I came, they got merged back together. They had been separate and baking had had a, um, space on Main Street in Berry and they were able to be open to the public sometimes. And that went away when they got kind of squished back together. Again, two teachers in a really small space where we can't accommodate the number of students that we should. And so we're, we're looking at spaces for that. And how can we take those two programs back apart? And provide more opportunity there. We are considering business. We're looking at, um, our digital media arts program. And does it make sense to have two layers? Or is there a way that we can shift some of that? And I think it is important to look at. What do our sending schools have? How can we help build the pipelines from there? How can we, we? We collaborate. And I know that long before I even thought about working in CTE. That, um, CBCC had pilot, like they had foundations programs in some of their sending schools. So they had one at Harwood, they had one at U thirty-two. And I think one other school. And so. We can foot the bill, like pay the salary of someone and count those students potentially. And have a space at one of our sending schools. So there are a lot of things that we can explore that we just haven't had the capacity to do yet, but we need to.
Thanks.
Yeah.
You have your own mechanisms for transportation?
We have a bus without a driver. We, I mean, mostly we rely on the sending schools delivering the students to us and taking them back. At the end of the day. We have a couple of vans, a truck and a short bus that we can use for field trips and for projects that we do. But we would need to work on that. Um, right now, we also partner with community rides. Because the students who are in design and fabrication are, their classroom is at the Granite Museum. And so they come to the center, they get their breakfast, and then community rides drives them. To the Granite Museum and then brings them back at the end of that day. So we are working on ways to. To meet those needs. And I think that's another area we could partner. It's also one of the. The, um, things that we're hoping the legislature works on, because right now. Equity for students and access doesn't exist if you can only come to me and I turn you away because I don't have enough seats. And the only way you can go to Randolph or to Riverbend or to Essex is if you have the transportation.
Right.
And that's, that's not equitable. And so I think that, that, uh, on the line calendar throughout the state for CTE. And having a transportation system or plan statewide for CTE would benefit more students. Chance to ask questions if they have them, but I don't see any. Thanks again, Jody.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us.
As everyone's finished with their questions, I want to thank you and CBCC, because I have a lot of classmates and just like people I know around the school. Who've gone to CBCC and it's just worked really well for them. Because for whatever reason, this building didn't work for them or. That just worked better. And especially with the concerns that we all have about getting a job that pays well enough. It's just really awesome to see how well that works for people. So. Thank you for everything CBCC does. And I hope that you keep getting the support you need to run your program.
Awesome. Thank you. I'm glad your friends are feeling like it was the right fit for them.
Okay, our next order of business is the latest presentation on our. Budget and then a board discussion on what direction to go in. Anyway, Libby?
Okay.
Okay, so just some, um. Reminders of where we've been. So the board and the community have seen this chart before. This is the FY twenty-four comparison. If Act one twenty-seven had been in place last year. Uh, for the fiscal budget that we are in now, FY twenty-four. Uh, we do have some new numbers in here. So, uh, the December first dollar yield number came in. Lower than, uh, anticipated slightly. So the dollar yield. Uh, is recommended to be, keep in mind, the dollar yield does not get voted on until May by the legislature. It's typically one of the last bills to be voted on. The dollar yield is anticipated to be nine thousand four hundred fifty-two. Last year, um, if one twenty-seven was in, in effect, the dollar yield would have been nine thousand six hundred eighty-seven. So it is decreasing slightly. Um, from last year's kind of fakeish numbers to this year's more real numbers. The other number that is different on this slide is the equalized pupils. So Christina put in, um. Anticipated numbers. This is not a real number yet. We, we get the real number from the state and we have. Although they said that they were going to send it to us yesterday, we did not get it yesterday, or at least I'm not aware of us getting it yesterday. So this is anticipated. It did, Christina is anticipating that number of equalized pupils to go up, actually. Cause although our enrollment has dropped slightly. Because the state is using a different way to qualify students and families as free and reduced lunch. Um, our numbers actually went up across the board there. And of course, that's a larger weight with the new waiting study. So that's the reason why. That number went up by approximately sixty students.
So that's good news.
That's good news. Yay. Dario, bad news.
Sixty.
Yeah. Um, so, uh, the rest is similar to what the board has seen before. Okay.
It was, it was minus seventy-four and now it's minus fourteen?
No.
Okay.
No. The minus seventy-four was the, I'll remind you that it was the calculation, uh, that the. Um, Brad James at the State, the Agency of Education did to show districts, whether they'd be an advantaged or disadvantaged district with the new weights. And what he did was he took the new, he took our old weights. Um, and then use some magical math that I could not tell you how to do it, but with a equalizing factor to kind of show. Apples to apples there. And that's where we know that we would have been, we were a disadvantaged district under Act one twenty-seven. That is not the number you see here on, on, on the board. That was the first number we used. Then we got clarity to use a different number. Which is essentially you doing. The column on the right, FY twenty-four budget, if Act one twenty-seven were in place. Like, that didn't happen, right? But that is if it had been in place. Does that make sense, Fred? Kind of. Yeah. I know. It kind of makes sense to me, too.
So does that, um, increase, quote-unquote, increase in, in, um, equalized pupils? Translate to a decrease in projected. Effect on the tax.
Yes. Slightly. So, uh, while I don't have the number exactly right here, and I don't want to take the time to pull it up. I believe this lower yellow number, the seventeen point eight nine percent number. Last time, actually Jill's got the presentation right now. I think eighteen point something. Yeah. So that decreases the equalized tax rates slightly. Which is the tax rate prior to CLF. Um, okay, so for the community's benefit, in order to have this conversation. Jimmy and I had a long conversation about how to jumpstart it to make it a little bit easier. Um, and the three of us decided to send the board an anonymous survey. Um, simply to jumpstart this conversation. In the last board meeting last Wednesday, you remember that, um. We showed pie charts of percentages of, of potential cuts. Um, for the board to ask questions about and ponder throughout this week. Um, and so just yesterday, yesterday, two days ago, yesterday. I sent out the anonymous Google survey to see where board members were kind of landing in that. Um, and so really all it asked them to do was rank the five categories that were shown and the ideas, um, presented last week. Um, and then add any other comments. So this, the what the community will see right now in the board for that matter. Will see the results of that survey, um, put into a barcode. So responses to the anonymous survey, um, where cuts should be made to the board, not to the community, but to the board. Um, this is already assuming if we, we are anticipating that we will have to cut approximately eight hundred thousand. Just as a reminder, approximately eight thou- hundred thousand from our budget in order to come below the ten percent. Uh, number.
The top yellow number.
The top yellow number in order for our budget to be capped. Um, somebody told me, told business managers and superintendents at a conference this week to not use jargon. And I was like, how do you explain this? Using jargon, I don't know. So I'm kind of, I'm stumbling around based on that. Um, so if we have a eight hundred thousand that we need to cut that we're anticipating. Um, what the board was asked to do was to assume that four hundred thousand of that, at least fifty percent of that eight hundred thousand would be in staffing and benefits. The reason being is staffing and benefits is eighty percent of our salary. And there's our budget, sorry, thinking, yeah, is of our budget. And there really is no way to get to eight hundred thousand dollars without thinking about staffing and benefits a bit. So. What me and Jim and I, um, decided on the survey was to assume there would be four hundred thousand dollars in cuts to staffing and benefits. Um, and then we asked the, the board members to prioritize the five ideas that were presented to them. Um, so school, individual school budgets, each school has a budget that they have. Principals are in charge of those budgets. Um, they include things like teacher supply lines, field trip lines, um, things that are very individualized to the school. The board looked at transportation. The board looked at increasing the fund balance, uh, facilities and staffing benefits. So what I did with the responses this afternoon was I looked at four and five. If, if somebody ranked it as a four or five. Um, then they were willing to take those cuts, right? They were more willing to make those cuts than other cuts. If somebody ranked something as a two or a three, it was in the middle. And if somebody ranked something as a zero, one. Um, they really didn't want to look towards cuts there. Ranking all makes sense to everybody? Uh, and so the responses were, um, what you see right here. So, um, six board members out of our nine. Said that the school budgets would be something they would be willing to look at for cuts as a, as a larger percent, or as a percentage of that pie chart. To get to the other four hundred thousand dollars. Um, transportation was also highly ranked by the board members. Five board members said that transportation should be a place that we could make, um, that could be a big part of the pie. The one that stood out that was, don't, don't do any more there is staffing and benefits. So the board were quite clear with six people again. That that is not something they're willing to do beyond the four hundred thousand. So the, the question around staffing and benefits would be, we're going to. We know we have to cut four hundred thousand dollars from staffing, staffing and benefits. Um, do you want to do more than that? And the six members of the board were quite clear that that was not a place they were willing to go. Any, I just want to stop right here from the board. Any, any questions just on this?
What does the facility say? So is that saying that? Most of us said it was a two or a three?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And I just wanted to say, just to piggyback off of what Libby was saying, is that this is really just so that we could jumpstart the conversation. We wouldn't hold, I mean, we don't even know who those six board members are, but we wouldn't hold you to it if you decided over the course of tonight's discussion. Actually, no, don't touch school budgets. For example, um, it really was just to give us something as a launch point, um, to be able to start the conversation.
So there were two open-ended comment boxes for the board to be able to make comments. Um, and the themes, we put these into themes. Um, so there is a theme around no more reduction in force. So no more, that would be a riff, no more reduction in force staff and benefits than the four hundred thousand K. However, retirement buyouts are supported by the board. Which have already been offered into our three unions. Um, transportation, keep all transportation to Roxbury was a theme from a few board members. And cut Main Street Middle School busing was a theme for, from a few board members. Use the fund balance. Um, so consider unencumbering money for the track was a theme, but from a couple of board members. Uh, facilities, cut out any renovations, but no deferred maintenance was a theme that, that came out. And stay away from the student experience. So just generalizing what you all said, not using your direct quotes, but generalizing what you all said. These were the themes that popped out.
Is there a way to see? I feel like Jake or Jim might have a caution. I feel, maybe I'm.
Let's. Have your little squares on the screen right now, so.
Go ahead, Jake.
The reason we haven't.
Do I have a square on the screen?
Now we do.
Okay, um, so, um, sorry to. Uh, there are a couple of slides, a few, few slides ago that went by kind of quickly. Um, but, um. The, the student count, um, it's now eighteen sixty roughly. Um, so are you feeling like co- confident in that number? Or is that something that you're? Not wanting? Or is that something that you're not wanting to use at this time?
Well, we have put it in there, so we're confident enough to put it into the, the um, calculation. However, we don't make that final decision. The, the, the agency of education is expected to give that to us any day now.
Okay, cause um, on it's, so you know, the ten percent increase that we're trying to avoid. Um, that's for, that's on per pupil spending. So it's not on overall budget. Um, so now that there's more pupils, the per people spending amount, I don't know what. The, you know, what the target is, but it's something, you know, higher than fourteen, one ninety-three. You know, if you take last year's per people spending and multiply it, you know, add ten percent to it, it's fourteen, six forty-seven. Um, so I think there might be more space than we think there is.
Slightly perhaps. We'll see what the number is and we'll have that. I'm, I'm anticipating we'll have it by next week when, when we do the actual first draft of the budget.
Okay.
So from, this is from the survey and like what Mia said, nobody is. Nobody is committed to what they said, but from the anonymous survey of the board members, the clear direction that I could see. Is to make cuts from school budgets. So again, that's teacher supplies, field trips, new library books, that kind of thing. That's where the principals would be taking that from. Um, and number two, transportation. And so I just put what we talked about, this was known information from last week with a, just an addition of the number of students. So eliminating busing for students living in Montpelier who attend Main Street Middle School affects about a hundred twenty-five students daily. To the cost of a hundred seventy thousand dollars. Eliminating the late bus for students living in Roxbury affects approximately three students daily, and that's to the tune of twenty-five thousand dollars. Eliminating the after-school bucks for Roxbury Village School is really hard to predict because of the state of the after-school program. Next year, uh, families will have to pay for that, which they won't this year. So currently that affects one to five students, but that number could go up if, if people decide not to do the after-school program. And that cost is approximately thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, and it was very clear that the board members did not want to make any more cuts beyond the four hundred thousand dollars from staffing and benefits. Um. I don't know what I was saying in the survey.
Well, we asked that directly.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Very clear.
Yeah, it's a thank you. Like, what did I write? Um, there was one comment that was not a theme because only one person said it, uh, to eliminate the extra. The positions that were added using Esser funds. Um, which of course would be staffing and benefits eliminations. There's a little contradiction there. And I would just point out that those positions that were added to using Esser funds are interventionists. And that's what they are. There are no other positions that um, we've added besides academic interventionists through Esser funding.
Did we add social emotional learning interventionist using?
That was local funds.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So there's more discussion needed around facilities. Um, how much is the board looking at? That was kind of a middle ground piece. Um, so there's more discussion around that. The fund balance, there's some discussion needed there. Currently with the track money encumbered, the board can add two hundred thousand to the already committed four hundred thousand in this budget. Okay, so we've already committed in that revenue source, there is already four hundred thousand dollars committed from the fund balance. And in order to stay within policy, the board could add approximately two hundred thousand more. Um, the board can take action to unencumber the money for the track, which opens up, of course, more money. Uh, and number three, staffing and be- benefits, um, plus school. Plus school budgets, just to give you an overall sense of where we're at right now. Um, is four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars uh, total. Cause I suggested last week that the, the school budgets would be around thirty-five thousand, ten thousand for each Montpelier school and five thousand from Roxbury Village School. Um, that of course is not a set number in stone, right? That's just what I presented to you. So if we use, using that figure, we would need approximately three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar more to come up from transportation facilities. And the use of additional fund balance. I also want to put out to the board that. Um, we're not necessarily asking for specific ideas from the board. We're still asking for kind of percentages and chunks. Um, and then it's our job next week to come back to you to show you specifics, specifics on what it is that we've cut. Um, so if that makes sense to the board, then I will send it over to Mia to open it up for discussion.
Nice, quick. Yeah, why don't we start with questions? Yeah.
I can't remember, when are we, when does the facilities work that's currently happening? When do they like give us a report or something?
We have to look at the.
Cause I'm, I'm feeling like. There could be some really good nuggets of information in there. I think that's probably why we're having them do that. So it's a little late for this cycle, but they might find some really interesting, you know, I don't know, just. As soon as we can get it, it'd be helpful to see how that, because if we might think we know what to do about. A certain building or heating systems or whatever, they might have come up with a different.
The interim report to the school board for that is March twentieth.
Okay.
Thank you. The final report is May fifteenth.
Okay.
Thanks.
One of the slides said cuts from transportation for MSMS, not Roxbury. And I felt the slightest wisp of hope. And then the cuts were cuts to the late bus and cuts to the after-school bus, the PM bus. I don't understand, that's, it seems like, I don't understand the discrepancy.
No, 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 I was just sharing with the board the um, the slide. So this is, this is something from, this is something that needs more discussion. So people, people were pretty positive that transportation was a place where cuts could be made in order to make up this money. Um, and I wanted to give the board the, the figures there. Uh, these are the three options that were consent, that were talked about last week.
So we could say, yep, do them all, which would be one ninety-five, two thirty. Or we could say do all, but now this might be a place where direction from the board would be useful to you. Add a little bit more of a granular.
Yeah, because we.
Just transportation.
Yeah.
Um, there aren't too many buckets in transportation. Right, so we, but we could also say, just do the Main Street Middle School bus, which is students who live in Montpelier and take the bus to Main Street Middle School. Which would just be one seventy. Does that help clarify that? Yeah. And right now, with the direction that we've gotten from the board so far. Our total that we've gotten to is four hundred thirty-five, and we need to find three hundred sixty-five thousand. Four hundred, we're at four hundred thirty-five thousand, we need to find three hundred sixty-five thousand. So just as a hypothetical, we as a board could say, let's do the Main Street Middle School bus at one seventy. And let's do an extra two hundred thousand from our fund balance. And we're there. Just as a hypothetical, we could do that. We could also say, no, go bigger on school budgets and. Do something, you know, that's. So are there any other questions that folks have? I see Miriam and then Scott, um, just to try and understand the presentation. I think would be, let's get that all out and then we, let's hear thoughts that people have. And then just like last week, we'll open up to public comment after that.
Is there, is the reason that you're using the four hundred thousand dollar cut already from staffing and benefits that? There's. I realize this is a matter of judgment, but that there's no plausible way to reach the eight hundred thousand dollar cut without that cut.
There probably is, however, it'd be significant cuts to facilities, transportation.
Eighty percent of our budget is staffing and benefits, so there's going to have to be some work done there. And there was already some planned things that we've discussed as, we've discussed last week, like there was, because of enrollment, a K-six. Uh, license position would be reduced because of enrollment.
So I don't know if this question is for, for Jake or for um, for Libby. But Jake, if I understood your question and the answer correctly. Are the target based on the, the projections and numbers that we have now is not, is no longer eight hundred thousand. But something less than eight hundred thousand that we would need to reduce for next, this coming budget.
It will still be around that. Remember, that's a anticipated potential. So it could be seven forty, it could be eight twenty, right? So career center tuition just rose, so that just adds to our, to our, you know, like things are changing. Just keep that in mind, that we are still very early in the budget season. Even in a typical season, this would be the board meeting that we, you see the first draft, right? So we've pushed that back a week. Um, and as more veteran board members will know, and you know from serving on Randolph's board. We get more solid numbers as the budgeting process keep, goes on. And even when we send a budget out to the voters, we still don't have totally solid numbers. So um, I would say we're still hovering around the eight hundred thousand based on things coming in. Pre-K tuition, just, we just learned it went up today. Like I just got an email right before the board meeting. So there's, there are things that are still waffling out there that are influence, that can influence that number. And I think it's safe to go with around eight hundred thousand, and maybe less, or maybe a little bit more.
And I think it would be great for us to be in a position, a month from now, go to say, oh, actually, we can.
Great.
Put something back in the budget than to, again, a month from now, have to do another.
Which has happened in years past.
Yeah.
Which has happened in years past, like significantly so. So, never know, maybe pleasantly surprised.
Would it be nice?
I just want to make sure I'm connecting all the dots. Um, so coming back to the numbers that you mentioned, so four thirty-five. And that we need to, we need to get another three hundred and sixty-five to reach our eight, um, our eight hundred thousand. So the four thirty-five is staff and benefits. We're assuming we need to cut four hundred thousand from there, correct? Yeah, and so the additional thirty-five, where does that come from when you say four thirty-five?
Individual school.
Okay, great. And so then when the slide that lists kind of our other potentials. That's, that's kind of showing us the ranking and, and the priorities, or Libby, that's kind of used, taking our rankings and saying this is where they could come from. And this is the amount they equate to and how far they would get us and hitting that three sixty-five. Just like to make sure I've got it all.
What, are you asking about the bar graph? Or are you? Okay, you were asking about the one that had the.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm understanding the current pots.
Got it.
Um, okay, thank you.
On the bar graph, did, was one of the options about the fund balance?
Yes.
Yes. And where did, did that just fall like in the middle?
That's. I found the middle, okay.
It sounds like Brett and then Scott.
I, I, I have a, a fuzzy memory that the pie chart number one. Had uh, salary and benefits of sixty-five percent of the eight hundred thousand. And, and that accounts to about five hundred and twenty thousand, but I thought that there was. Uh, a path that wasn't gonna have a strong impact on the student experience. Finding five hundred and twenty thousand in salary and benefits, was that not? I, I just, I thought that it, it, there was a couple of, there, there are some rift positions that were expected. There were a couple of things that were sort of expected, and then there was a possibility that um, potential retirements would fit in there. And, and it, I had a memory that it, it would get to five hundred and twenty thousand. Um, without too much pain in the sense. Is that right?
We can get to um, four hundred thousand without very much pain. I mean, we're talking about people's positions, but um, we can get to four hundred thousand dollars in staffing and benefits through uh. A K-six riff with enrollment that we know about, not filling a couple of open positions um, that haven't been open all year. Uh, and potential retirements. So I am not hopeful on the retirement piece. On finding a significant amount of money that helps us this budget year on the retirement piece. Um.
So, so four hundred is the, the number.
And that's just my hunch. That's just my hunch in knowing of my colleagues. That, that's all that's based on right there.
Well, hopefully people look at you.
Could I say one, one comment before you go?
I just want to look at that, the bar graph of our responses.
Great, oh sure.
If you can just pop that, that up, I can probably answer my own question.
I just, uh, the thing I wanted to comment on was this word pain, because um. I think no matter what we do here. It's, it's, there's going to be pain, including making decisions to not make cuts, causes pain in the other direction of. Hardship of increased taxes, particularly on people who might not be able to bear that hardship. And so when we're talking about pain, I think it's important for not only to, for us to keep that impact in mind and hold that very carefully. But also to be thinking, we are, we need to make these decisions at a systems-wide level. And we now have the benefit as a board and as a community of having priorities that we have just recently articulated. Based on a great community engagement process where we got a vision from our community. That we need to be prioritizing closing the achievement gap and, and belonging, safety and wellness. And so when we say pain, we should probably be thinking less about, although it's very hard. The pain that individual members of our community will be feeling because that is hard, very hard. But also we need to be thinking more about what, not about staying true to those priorities and using those priorities to guide us. So I appreciate Brett, you framing that as what are the cuts that get us? That have the least amount of impact on the student experience, because that is a major factor that the board needs to be considering. Do you still have a question after looking at the bar graph?
I was gonna like geek out on the stats and then, I don't, I don't know that it's worth it. Cause it's really just our opinions at that moment in time and so, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna, um, what's it, defer my time to the.
Yield.
Yield my time. The woman from Vermont.
Um, I, I'm, I really appreciate how much explanation and thought has gone into making this really transparent. Cause it's helping make some decisions. Um, and we're talking a lot about the student experience. And I, I'm heartbroken to say that I do feel like it feels a little blind to not be looking at the money that we have in the fund balance. I think we've been hit by like a literal and metaphorical flood since then. I just feel like we're in such a completely different financial place. We had this fund balance that was healthy. We had huge community and student support. We were, I mean, that was a great use of one-time funds. And I don't want us to do the thing where you buy it down one year and then our tax rates are still impacted. But it does feel really um, a little blind to, to be talking about, you know, ten thousand, thirty thousand here. And not talk about the money that we have encumbered, or at least some of the fund balance to put towards it. So I guess I'm advocating to consider maybe using some of the fund balance.
Okay.
Um, there's been so much discussion about the track or not the track and what's going to happen to that money. Was that involved and is that in here anywhere?
It came up as a theme in the open-ended, the open-ended thoughts. It is not represented in any of the numbers that I've shared with the board. Because that, for me, from my position as superintendent, the board has not given me the rights to touch that yet. Right? That's your decision. That's not my decision to make. And so because the board encumbered that money for the track. So anytime you see increased fund balance, as of right now, I am asking the board to draw the line at two hundred thousand dollars. Because your own policy has set that, has set an amount that needs to stay available for the district's use. And if you spend more than two hundred thousand dollars as it is now, with the money that is encumbered for, for, not just the track, but other projects as well. Um, you will go below your policy number.
Of how much money we need to have in the.
Exactly, exactly. Does that make sense, Lynn?
I understand what you're saying. Um, and I guess my question is more, um. Is the track, has the track been set aside or has it just been assumed that it's part of the fund?
The board took action to encumber that money.
The board voted um, about a year ago, a little more than a year ago.
Okay.
So. The, the fund balance, the fewer of us said anything about the fund balance. So there, my, I, I, I had a question when I was filling it out about that. And some people didn't respond at all. And so I'm wondering. Yeah, cause.
Right.
The, there are far fewer responses to the fund balance than the others. Um, I'm curious, so I again, I don't think it's as important to talk about the survey, but maybe talk through what that might mean.
Yeah.
And since we're talking about it now.
That's great. That's a great idea. And then I just want to make sure again, Jim and Jake, we can't see your squares. So if your hands are raised, um or maybe you can stop sharing your screen, I guess, so that we can see their squares.
It keeps sharing and unsharing.
Yeah, that's okay. I think it's helpful to show the slides again if people need to see them. So the question on the table is, again, I think if I'm just going to phrase frame a specific question is we have three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars more to find, how much of that do people? Would people propose come from the fund balance? Again, just as a reminder, because there's a lot of numbers being thrown around in our regular budget, we're already projecting to draw four hundred thousand from the fund balance as a source of revenue. So where is there, how much more than that would board members like, would board members like to see drawn?
Unbalanced.
A little over two million, yeah? Yeah, I don't have that on right now. I haven't.
It was in the most recent quarterly financial report.
Yeah, it was in our financial.
Looks like Brett might have it at his fingertips.
I don't have that in that with me, right? So it's all you.
Impressive, right?
A percentage of our.
Five hundred and seventy-seven thousand over the two percent limit from as of first quarter this year twenty-fourth. That's what it says on the paper.
Might be a good question for Stephen.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I remember looking at it. But that.
And then there's a total figure.
This these are, this is the unencumbered.
Got it.
Right? And so this is set aside for like the the track is here. And then this this fiscal year and next fiscal year.
So does that constitute a discrepancy then, the two hundred thousand versus the five seventy-seven? If, or maybe we're going to get finality on here.
Because this is.
But literally by your calculations, two, we could draw another two hundred thousand in order to still be in.
With up-to-date numbers with our fund balance of what she had and what had already been committed.
Yep.
Which could be different than what's on the first quarter report because we're now well into the second quarter.
Yeah.
Um, and it was around, is it exactly two hundred dollars around to go about? Yeah.
So nine twenty-seven.
In addition to the nine.
Yes.
Total.
Okay, and the track is part of that.
No.
That's set aside then.
Right.
Outside of the extra two hundred thousand that's available, that still keeps us within all the parameters.
Yeah.
But we have the requirements we have.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and knowing that for four more years, we may be in so somewhat of a similar dilemma, so we don't want to put all of our eggs in this basket.
I would agree with that statement, yes. Yeah. So if if anybody who's following along at home would really like to see these numbers themselves, you can find them in the meeting documents for the November first, twenty twenty-three meeting. They, it's in the F Y twenty-four quarter one financial report on page uh two, at the top of page two. The, and again, as Libby just pointed out, this is a little bit old because it's the end of quarter one and not, and we are well into quarter two. But our complete and total fund balance is three million, six hundred seventy-seven thousand nineteen dollars. Now, there are assigned items, including the revenue that streams that we plan on using for F Y twenty-four, the year we're in, F Y twenty-five next year, each of those are four hundred thousand. So that takes that down by eight hundred thousand already. Then there's the committed fund balance that the board voted on for, that's one point nine million to um intended for track upgrades. And then there is an unreserved set aside of fifty thousand for the potential net zero study, which brings us to a fund balance that there's no plan for of about nine hundred twenty-seven thousand nineteen dollars. And that number is about three hundred fifty thousand dollars over the two percent limit.
So there's also the equity audit is coming out of the fund balance, the facilities work is coming out of the fund balance, which essentially equals another hundred.
Another hundred thousand, which takes us down to two hundred, which takes us down to two hundred fifty thousand dollars over that two percent limit. And that two percent is what the board has in policy that we have to have liquid and unassigned and available to us in our fund balance.
I believe there's also been some small facilities things that have come out of that as well. So
Right.
Oh, out of that last remaining fifty thousand, Jim is saying he'd like to jump in.
Right, so just to just to close that thought, those are where you could find those numbers to be able to do that math to say, oh, yeah, we get it, another two hundred thousand dollars is what we could quote-unquote easily move from the fund balance on top of the four hundred thousand we were already planning. And now, Jim, I'll.
Uh, first off, apologies, I'm in an airport, so you might hear uh announcements. Can you hear me?
I hate to interrupt you while you're apologizing, but I just wanted to give Lynn a chance to finish her thought before I.
Oh, sorry.
My bad.
If we use that, that would leave us with nothing for the next.
That would leave us with the policy, with your policy, your policy has a statement.
Right, but I mean, where we're with the requirements we've set for ourselves.
Yes. Yes, if we use the two hundred thousand this year, that would leave us with no more fund balance to draw from in future years.
Based on our current.
Right. Right. Yeah. Great questions.
While Jen's talking, could you pop a slide up that just has the um, like the transportation figures, just the other kind of topic areas and the assigned uh costs, please?
You got a seven.
It might help to share the the slides with board members now so they can have another computer support.
All right, Jim, take it away.
All right, so a few thoughts and um you're gonna hear some airport announcements and one, sorry if I repeat some of this, but said, I think it might make a lot of sense if we unencumber that money for the track and just put it as a set aside for future budgets for the administration to um potentially use and also for you know, the potential aftershock of when the five percent cap goes away. I think it's a distraction to have it named for the track right now. I think the chance of it going to the track is pretty slim. Um, and I think it just, it just might there is some confusion. I think set aside that money for what we probably wanted to be set aside for, which is to give us some room to maneuver over the next few years. Just an idea, I think I think it would be smart. Um, as much as I really support the track, and we're just in a very different situation now than we were when we uncovered that money for the track. Um, second, I think if we do that, we have to realize that this is a five-year game. And we should be very careful about trying to extend its utility as far as possible and use it very judiciously so we're um not saving ourselves from one year's disaster to create a much bigger uh, you know, shortfall the next year. So um, use it to kind of as a glide path to to make it easier for us not to avoid, I think you did a really good job of framing the the pain issue, not to avoid some temporary pain for some like maybe more intense future pain. I I think I think that could be very tempting uh, to avoid making hard decisions and uh, we're gonna have to be very kind of conservative with that money. Um, and and I think that's uh, you know, it's pretty much it, but I I think I think, yeah, I think we, things have changed since the the track was the intended use of that money. And I think it just might be uh, so it is the community what we're thinking, how we're thinking about that money if we kind of officially changed um what we have designated it's used for.
All right, thank you, Jim. Jim, just to clarify, are you proposing we vote on that on on uncovering the track money tonight?
I think if if we're ready to, if not, maybe the next meeting, I mean, it's and and if and if we want to keep it uncovered for the track, I think that's fine too. I just think we should kind of, what I'm hearing in the discussion is is that and probably the community is here too, like that that money is set aside for the track and and it's it's not at least, you know, for this year, something that we're thinking about in terms of a revenue source. Maybe for futures, and I think we are at least thinking about it as a revenue source for future years. Um, and especially if we use, you know, the extra two hundred thousand dollars now. Um, then probably next year, we're going to be in a place where we're going to have to go to that money anyways. Um, so I I think unless you know, in unless we feel there's a substantial chance that that we want to keep that money for the track, I think renaming the designation makes sense. Um, and I know there's definitely some, you know, rumblings and confusion in the community. I don't think it's widespread, but you know, we've seen this kind of flare up before that, you know, the that this money is that we're still thinking about this money as track money. And I don't think we're really thinking about this money as track money. I think we're thinking about this money as money that we're probably going to need to use over the next four to five years to, you know, to kind of deal with the 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 implications from Act one twenty-seven. Um, and I think it's just a confusing message to the community to to still have it be officially designated as track money, because every time we say that, that's what they, that's what people hear. And for legitimate reasons. So I think if we just cleared up the confusion and you know, look, if the legislature comes in this year and fixes Act one twenty-seven and we're in a very different situation next year and we don't do something like spend all this money this year, you know, we could still revive the track conversation. Um, but I think where we are currently, that designation is creating confusion and I don't think it's making a track anymore likely.
Yeah. Yeah, and that that I hear that, Jim, and um, Libby just reminded me if we were going to vote on that, we would need it to be warned on the agenda. So tonight is not the night to take that vote. Um, but duly noted and we should put it on an agenda as its own item to have that conversation so that the public is fully aware. When that's going to happen. I don't think I have anyone on the stack after Jim. Who wants to go next?
I just want to, I don't want to repeat everything Jim said, but I just want to agree with all that if, as much as I'm still hopeful about a track as a track runner, um if we don't have any intention currently of building a track, I think it's probably making some community members either hopeful or angry or anywhere in between more than is needed.
Yeah. Um, I was going to see if there was anyone on the board who wanted to try and fill that three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar hole with a proposal before we open it up for public comment. Or if board members would rather at this point hear from the public in order to be able to have that conversation, I'm fine with that too. Were you raising your hand?
So that's not the conversation around salary benefits or school budgets, but the other piece?
Fund balance, transportation. You could say part of that three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, I personally, as a board member, would like to see more cuts to salary and benefits. That that could be a thing you put on the table, but yeah, generally answering your question, yes.
Yeah, that that won't be what I'm saying.
Okay.
Um, I, the, I I'm wondering about the transportation piece. Um, and I, and maybe this is a conversation for next week and so because I I are how is the current transportation policy for M S M S um applied? If how is the policy for busing students to M S M S currently applied? And what would we be taking away by cutting that?
So you would be, I'm not sure how to answer the policy question. I mean, I think I just last week monitored it last week, so we could pull up that monitoring report. Um, Vermont is a is a privileged state, it's called with busing and transportation, so we are not required as a school district to provide busing.
Yep.
Um, and uh, under policy, there's no direct schools that you have promised busing to under policy. Um, how it would influence Main Street Middle School is that when it came into existence was my first budget year as a superintendent here at Montpelier Roxbury, and it was framed as an equity issue. Um, and that it was inequitable to not bus the kids at Main Street Middle School because of their youth and because of distances from the schools, because of the large hill that was is right because of the street, there's lots of things that was that were brought to it. So currently, any student at Union, any student in Union and Main Street Middle School who live beyond a mile radius of the school um, can take the opportunity to ride a bus.
And there are no other factors considered in that decision?
No, it's it's a mile radius, that's it. And there's those buses that serve Montpelier schools only, um, they are full, they're they're complete, so there's seventy-seven kid buses in there.
The reason I ask is not all miles in Vermont are equal, right? Like, um, and so a mile, so if you live two miles and there are sidewalks the entire way versus if you live half a mile and there are no sidewalks, right? There, so to me, that nuance is is important. And so I'm I'm.
It depends if you live a mile away and you live uptown Hill Road.
Again, so there's like sidewalks, sidewalks was just one.
Yeah, yeah.
One of the factors.
But that's pretty significant.
And so is it? Would it be feasible to have a policy where you have to opt into busing for M S M S? And in order to do so, there are certain factors that you um.
I think, I mean, sure, we could try something like that, and Jim was talking about earlier, maybe just bus the fifth graders, like, could we limit the number of kids who are able to take that advantage? The challenge with the with the suggestion you just had that I can think of just off the top of my, I'm just talking off the top of my head. Because I have not thought about that, right? Is that that makes it very difficult for the bus company to figure out who's supposed to be on that bus and who's not. And so um I can imagine that the bus company, I don't want to speak for them, but I can imagine that they would block at that pretty hardcore. Um, that only these kids ride the bus and that you only pick up these kids and drive by the other kids that are just as far a distance that, you know, negative twenty degrees Celsius or Fahrenheit or whatever, you know what I mean? Like, I think that that's a tricky scenario for the bus, because we contract that, right? That wouldn't be on us, that would be on them. Um, the bus.
Well, how does the bus company know?
They do it by by, um, because you don't, only kindergartners get picked up door to door. So they they do it by bus stop, so they have essentially the same bus stops every year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because that's where kids generally live, you know? And if there's a, there's a kid who lives, like, it's happened once or twice. If a kid moves into a neighborhood that doesn't have a bus stop anywhere near them, um, they usually write to the bus company and see what happens.
About getting one?
Yeah. Yeah, it's I I would never want to work for a bus company, ever. It's like the most thankless job ever, both doing the roads and driving the buses.
Jill, you have a question, or we're sticking with transportation right now.
Oh, Jim also wanted to jump in on transportation.
And then I also have a question, so we'll go, Jill, are you, you're not, your question is not on transportation?
No, I thought you asked us like to kick off where we were at.
Percentages.
Yeah.
Percentages.
I love that. I love that. It sounds like we're still in the information gathering mode of of what do the numbers really mean? So let's see if we can close that loop and then, okay. Jim, you wanted to chime in on transportation?
Yeah, no, just because I was, I was um, you know, around when when this discussion happened. I mean, there are a few, I think, and and Libby, Libby, I think articulated many of the considerations with the F S M S busing. But a little extra context, one is when when the issue really heated up was when uh, U E S used to be K through five, but when it went through K through four, uh, you know, having those fifth graders not be bust, I I think got the attention of a lot of of caregivers and community members because you know, the the younger, you know, Scott just well articulated that, you know, not all miles in Vermont are the same, but also, you know, kids, kids' ability to kind of like navigate those tough miles, you know, with judgment and um, uh, et cetera, just becomes more and more difficult and and more and more of a safe. Et cetera, just becomes more and more difficult and, and more and more of a safety issue, the younger the kids are. You know, so fifth grade really kind of precipitated the, the conversation. So there's definitely that issue of, you know. Some of the seventh and eighth graders that are a little older are probably more able to safely get to school from a longer distance. You know, the fifth graders in particular, I, I think there are some legitimate challenges there. I think it's also worth noting that a lot of. The, the families that benefit from busing will be impacted from pulling back busing. Are some of the communities, lower income families. You know, that, that don't necessarily have. Perhaps as much means and flexibility, they're oftentimes, you know, families where. You know, the, the caregivers are in service jobs that have kind of less flexibility than, you know, office jobs, especially kind of post COVID. Are living in kind of the outskirts on places, you know, like down terrace, downtown hill. On the other side, you know, up Berlin Street, up towards Berlin, et cetera, you know, where they have. Some barriers that. Yeah, some other families don't have in terms of being able to get their kids safely to school. So. I just wanted to point out the, the equity issue was, was not just kind of in terms of, you know, age and grades, but also. You know, where some of the outer limits of our, you know, circle of transportation are and. You're kind of some of the demographics there and, and the type of families that, that are getting impacted the most by, by not having transportation.
Thank you. That's helpful, Jim. Kristen and then I have a couple of questions.
Great, so. I have comments that kind of hit on some of the themes that, you know, Jim is, is just bringing up, I think. You know, we've been wrangling with this in the last week, which it feels like it's been weeks, you know, I was like, wow, like, you know. The big yellow bus feels as synonymous with public school as like a carton of milk and it's just not, you know, it's just not that way. And, you know, and I'm thinking about Roxbury and I'm thinking about the geography of Roxbury, which is a 42 square mile town. Patagonically rural, you know, the distance from East Roxbury to, you know, kind of the far reaches to Roxbury Village School is. About, I think, nine miles, a 17 minute drive. So this, we're talking about like a pretty expensive, it's, you know, so for out for, to come to the school and to drive home is a 34 minute drive. For, for a parent, you know, when I hear from. In our community, you know, we have families that are working families and that are operating out of one vehicle. And I think about the value of the bus, you know, to those families. I. I feel concerned about the elimination of the bus at the end of the school day. When we don't at this point have an after school program kind of concept in place. I hear that there are intentions and there's thinking happening around this. But I definitely have concerns for our families, especially kind of, you know, and from, you know, very much that, that equity lens, you know, and thinking about. Our goals that we've set around, you know, chronic absenteeism, belonging, kids need to be able, and I'm glad to hear, because I think at the last board meeting. It was, it was being considered also eliminating the morning bus route to RVS. Which, am I correct? That was also included, I think, in one of the options. Yeah, no? Okay, so glad to hear that was.
I don't think, I have on the list in front of me and I don't see it.
Okay, so I'm glad to hear that's not, you know, on there, but just thinking about. Without the after school program that I think currently about 90% of our families rely on. In the thinking, Libby, that you and your team have done, has there been any talk about pursuing licensing for an after school program such that there would be subsidy? So it would be more within the reaches of, you know, our lower income families.
We have not talked about that and we don't have the staff to do that. That, that's an intense process.
Yeah, so I'm just thinking about that, you know, if, if it's feeling, you know, financially out of reach for families at that after, at end of the school day bus. Would feel like it's going to be a very critical piece for kids getting back home.
I am, I will tell from my opinion, if I can give it for transportation. I think, I honestly think cutting transportation for a required event of students. Meaning you are required to be at school. Is something the board should really think about carefully before making that decision when they, before they actually have to make that decision. Doesn't matter which school we're talking about. I think, I think that is a, that is a question that the board should consider. Put a lot of thought and consideration and discussion too.
So, so my questions are, can you say a little bit more about why it's, why the bus to Main Street Middle School? For Montpelier residents is $170,000 a year if it's already on the routes that they would be doing for UESs? We had to add buses, so it's new, more buses that are costing that.
I believe we added two, but it could have been three. We had to add at least two buses in order to fit the amount of kids.
Got it. Yeah, okay. I, I wanted to actually ask a question then about facilities, so I'm changing topics a little bit, but it's again to try and understand the full picture. In the three options that we looked at as like potential scenarios last week, it looked like the biggest. Number you went with for facilities, again, kind of just as putting it out there, was around $144,000. And that included, you know. Not doing classroom renovations and doing some deferred maintenance. Would you say 144,000 is the highest you would recommend we go on facilities?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. So it wouldn't be 365?
I mean, the board can make that decision. I would highly recommend not doing that.
Right. I get that.
We have two very old buildings. Three, including half of Roxbury, not the renovated half, but that's really, Roxbury doesn't have many facilities challenges. And a building that was just flooded.
And when I said that 144,000 number, you cringed significantly. Do you have a more like, if we were, facilities was one of the places that was like kind of. Middle of the road where some of us are like, yeah, we could cut from that, but not all of us were. Actually, most of us were like, yeah, I'm kind of on the fence about it. Do you have a number that you feel? Better about than 144, but also maybe a little higher than 22, which was in idea one for us?
I think probably we could, we would not want to cut facilities drastically every year. But I think if we're talking about a one year, get us through FY25's budget process, sorry, that my back is steel, there's less people over here. If we're talking about get us through FY25, right, we could probably comfortably do around $100,000 in facilities. For this budget year, because it would be one time costs that we wouldn't be doing, that Andrew may have been planning to do. And maybe one time furniture costs, you know, or, you know, something like that, that. Wouldn't hurt us drastically to not do.
And this doesn't include keeping, not making our investment in the capital plan.
It does not include that.
That is included in our budget, because that is not something we've discussed.
It's not something the board has discussed.
It's, so the 100,000 would be from our regular general budget.
Regular facilities budget.
Thank you, that's helpful for me. Any other questions on? Lay of the land or understanding what we're talking about? Or is everybody eagerly anticipating Jill's proposal like I am? Jim wanted in.
No, sorry, I was wondering if we wanted to do the public comment and then. But I'm fine, I can, I can throw it out to start the discussion. I, I. I actually understand this. I really appreciate how much work you guys have put into it. And, and like the facility, that was my next question, is like, what does that actually look like? I do feel like, I feel like we should use at least 200,000 from the fund balance. It seems like it's a rainy day fund, it seems like it's. Healthy, knowing there's things coming on the pike and it's raining right now. And it's really hard to leave that alone in the bank while we're talking about some of these other things. And then I would ask. I guess I was sort of going to ask that, it's like, okay, so facility is like what next week you've come, you know, come back with. I'm sure Andrew has ideas, not that.
He's already thinking about it.
This isn't the way we want to think about this, but, and that way, if. If Jake's right and the, the numbers still fall our way a little bit, then that's all the better. But I feel like it would be irresponsible to make some of these more extreme. Smaller cuts when we've got some money in the fund balance. So I'd like to use a good chunk of the fund balance personally.
Okay.
Were you saying and like 100,000 from facilities?
Yep.
And then hope for the best and then.
Numbers for next week. Which is something the board can say, like, let's start there and see where we're at next week.
So my quick back of the napkin calculation checked by Mia is that's 735,000.
I know, I know, no, that is most definite, that's the kind of thing we're looking for for the board. This is the, this is the direction we want you to go.
Right?
We can do that. And we, next week's the first draft of the budget, so more specifics will be brought in. Hopefully we'll have better, more solid numbers in terms of people counts and things like that. So it's totally something the board could do.
And that's also kind of spreading the pain, so to speak, right? So we have the salary, we have the facilities, we have the fund balance, we've got. The school based, but right where. And it also might buy us some time so that when we get the facilities report. We go into next year's budget cycle with a lot clearer information. That's my two cents.
Do folks have thoughts on Jill's and others' ideas? Because I don't want, if, if we hear from the public, like, don't do that, we're not only blaming Jill here. And then are there other folks who just have initial thoughts on that before I open it up to public comment? Yeah. So we'll go Miriam and then we'll go Jake.
Okay, can someone just list out for me, because I just blanked out a little bit, what that 730,000?
So it's 400,000 assumed for the staff. I was saying, say 200,000 or so from the fund balance and then about 100,000 from facilities. The school budget.
We're trying to get underneath the 10%.
Right, yeah, and that does not include an MSMS.
Correct, that's not currently in the calculation. The MSMS bus is not currently in this calculation.
And I missed one, it's the 400,000 of the staffing that we started tonight off with. I think 35,000 for the school, which is like field trips and library books, which really stinks.
Really sucks.
And then say 200,000 from the fund balance and then maybe 100,000 facilities. And that was getting us there and then see where things shake out.
Yeah.
But not cutting any busing that I said.
Right. All right, Jake.
Thanks. I think that if we do find out next week that, that things are looking more favorable. That'll be a relief. But we still are going to need to be really strategic. Because there's going to come a time, I don't know exactly when, but. We're not going to be protected by the 5% equalized rate thing. And we don't want a cliff at that point. And so, you know, I, I, I hope for better numbers next week, but I think we are gonna. Also have to be very conscientious about long-term spending.
Thank you for that reminder, Jake.
Yeah, thanks Jake. All right, why don't we pause board discussion and open it up to public comments? For anyone who would like to share their thoughts after hearing us. Yeah, please come forward and we have two folks in the room. Two folks in the room and then anybody who would like to online, use the raise hand function on Zoom or go ahead and turn your camera on and physically raise your hand. We will make sure you get in the queue. Yep, so first we'll go with the folks in the room and please, for everybody, please remember to introduce yourselves, name and where you are from.
My name is Arthur Smith, I am from Roxbury. And I have to comment on the process, because this brings to mind. Some of the graduate work I've done, and sometimes it's really nice to remember. The context of why you study what you study, and I studied with Eleanor Ostrom, a Nobel Peace Prize winner, who addressed the issue of managing the commons. Which is really what you're doing here, the process of managing something that's of public value and the public ownership. And it's great to see how you work with the information that you have that's ever changing. And one thing she reminded us as students is that institutions are artifacts. They're artifacts of what we value at the time. So when I hear this refrain, and it's been a constant one, which is really encouraging to hear. That as a school system for students, we value a sense of belonging, safety and wellness. And that's a guiding principle in how you decide what actions you're going to take. And what you always told us, no matter how you model a problem. Things change and the numbers change, everything changes, so you're always working with less than complete knowledge. So you have to work with the knowledge that you have. And one of the best things about the process that you have is you have so much information from the community about what they value. And how you're working with it. So I think one takeaway from so many years ago is that we don't always have the information we need. Things change, but we have to really focus on what we value. And since it's been so clearly articulated on almost every discussion that you've had. The prior, the priority you give not just to academic performance, but the total wellness of a student. I look at some of the decisions that you're making and the pie charts that you give, and I was really encouraged to see post COVID. That mental health and wellbeing can be addressed. And sometimes numbers don't speak for themselves. Something may not make sense as far as cost benefit analysis, but there's more value in it than the dollar spent. And that's when I look at the transportation cost. When you alienate students, and I've mentioned this before. That cost is well beyond the dollar value of transporting them. Because there are mental health issues associated with it. And what you have, you have wonderful tools in place, you have panorama, in time you'll have more information. But right now, it's a matter of just getting through now and addressing the problem and seeing what we can do with what we have. Taking a little bit more money perhaps than you might have anticipated from the. I don't have all the language down against the fund balance. And working with things staying in place for now. It's because communities, and I know Roxville is very, Roxbury is very resourceful. We developed a beautiful garden in the middle of our town. By bringing people together and resources together. And so if we have to come up with some per dollar mile of value. For transfer, transporting students, maybe there'll be a friend fund, maybe there'll be other initiatives. There's also a. Recreation committee that's establishing, that may want to fund some of this, so we just need more time. And I think we've clearly articulated, you've clearly articulated what you value. You value the students and their total wellbeing, not just their grades. So I want to applaud you and your efforts and the process, and you are the pulse of the state. And you are really, when people look back 40 years at the artifact you've created, I think you're going to be proud. Thank you.
That was lovely. My name is Nathan Sutter, I'm a resident, parent of two. And. Something else that I'll come to in a minute. Thank you as always, I'm, I feel so grateful that we have such an intelligent and caring board. I love the way you work through this stuff. I had one question which you can answer. After I leave the stage, which is I'm curious about when the equalized people numbers, right, there's, I think there's like a daily census. Sort of how often that's sampled and when the final numbers. October 1st counts, okay. And then I had a thought, as you were discussing the fund balance, which is the way that, I think, the way that it became. So robust over time is that we have, either by budgeting carefully or getting lucky. It seems like every year there has, there has been a surplus at the end of the budget year, which goes into the fund balance. Is that accurate?
The more complicated question than a yes or a no. There are some years we do not use the fully encumbered, like 400,000 or whatever we base our budget on, and there are some years we do.
Right, I just to Lynn's, to one of Lynn's questions, I was thinking. Right. I just to Lynn's, to one of Lynn's questions, I was thinking, well, um, it may, it may not be that by committing some of the fund balance now, we're then at a razor thin line next year because we may be fortunate again gambling. Um, and then I want to reiterate that, uh, for some, you know, there was a, a discussion about pain and or, or, uh, difficulty and where that sits. And I think that it's good to remember that for many people in this community who are, who have a limited, you know, fixed income or limited income, their tax impact of budget decisions made by our district is income sensitized and they are protected in terms of their property taxes. And so I think that there are a portion of folks in town who do bear the, the changes in the budget impact and those that largely don't, which is great. So it's just a, I want to keep that in mind. Um, so the other, the other identity that I have at this table is that I'm the, uh, track coach for the middle school track team. And I also help with the middle school cross-country team. So I have a vested interest in the, in the, um, funds allotted towards a renovated track. Uh, that said, I can't ignore the context that we're exist, that we exist in right now. And I have a thought, which is, um, one of the challenges we have with our current facility is that I think it's beyond sort of deferred maintenance. I think it's been neglected. That doesn't, you know, to have a functional track doesn't explicitly require that we have a brand new track. We could instead pay some attention to the facility we've got. Um, and so I wonder if for a very small fraction of those committed funds, we could, you know, rebuild the inner curve, curb of the track, uh, fix the, the substrate, the material that it's on. I mean, it was a, as a, as an athletic structure, it was remarkably resilient in the flood. It's all still there as far as I can tell. Uh, and then to invest in some equipment for the track team, you know, to a machine that can, or a device that can help us line the track so that we can hold competitions there. Hurdles, um, equipment like, uh, you know, a better runway for the long jump. So much more minor, uh, improvements that would, you know, if we had a, if we had an auditorium where the roof is falling in and most of the seats weren't safe to sit in, we probably wouldn't accept that. That doesn't necessarily mean we build a brand new auditorium unless we have the opportunity, but it might mean, hey, let's tend to those things. So if we, if we look at the track in a, in a, okay, let's, let's do what we can for now in the context that we're in. I still think that there is a bright, a bright way forward for that. And then that's a deferred dream as, you know, as we renew or think more broadly about all of our athletic facilities. So if that's a, if that helps, it certainly helps me to see that as a potential way forward. And I will, uh, commit to writing to Matt Link and to, uh, Libby with some specific ideas about what that might look like. So, um, thank you. And again, tremendously grateful for all the careful thinking you're doing.
Thank you.
Thanks. Just one more call to anybody in the room who would like to speak. Okay. I see James's iPhone online. With the hand raised.
Hey folks, Jim Ikenberry here, uh, Montpelier resident. Um, and, uh, supporter of the track, as everybody knows. I really want to echo, um, what Nathan just shared that I would even add to it is we have an unsafe facility. And I think that we don't want to have that from a track standpoint. Uh, we don't want that for our soccer fields. We don't want that for the theater. And, uh, we, we can't safely hold track meets, um, and we lack a lot of basic equipment. And so as he said, I think we can take some of those funds and make improvements just so it's a safe facility where we can have practice and somebody's not gonna, you know, break the rankle at the long jump pit. Um, I don't think that's asking too much. Um, so I think that we should make efforts towards that and that that's not a two million dollar project to get there. Um, so let's consider that. And, um, the equity piece I also want to talk about is related to transportation. Um, I really appreciate what Libby shared. And, um, I think that the board should think long and hard about, you know, taking, um, transportation away because I do think that's gonna, uh, uh, disproportionately impact the folks that we don't want to be disproportionately impacting. And as somebody who was a low-income kid in a rural school who was bused to a good suburban school, um, I feel like I can really relate to the Roxbury folks right now. And I also think that there'd be a disproportionate impact to them if you took away some of the after-school busing, whether it's for the current after-school program locally in Roxbury or for the folks that are in middle and high school and need to take a bus to get back to, uh, Roxbury. Um, I think those students deserve to participate in theater and after-school programs and sports, just like the Montpelier kids too. Um, so again, thanks for all your hard work and efforts on this and appreciate your, your work.
Thank you, Jim. I see, I believe it's Benjamin with your hand raised. Go ahead and come on, on mic and please introduce yourself for the record.
Hi, um, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
My name is Ben Pinkus and I'm calling from Roxbury, Vermont. And, um, I just wanted to briefly say, you know, I want to thank again all of you guys for, uh, working really hard and trying to get through really difficult decisions. Um, I do want to say that, of course, it's ironic that, um, Act one twenty-seven is supposed to improve student equity. Um, the, the irony is there, of course, if it negatively affects a struggling school like Roxbury, even potentially leading to its, leading to its closure, um, is a huge irony. But beyond that, there's also other kinds of inequity at work, in particular, the sense of a real lack of power and agency on the part of myself and I think many, many other citizens and parents in, in Roxbury, um, in which we feel like we have very little, um, bit of a voice or say in this process. So I guess I'm just pleading to all of you guys. I know you're doing your best to make these difficult decisions, but I'm pleading that there's will be transparency going forward, um, that we, that Roxbury residents and parents are engaged in this process. Um, timelines are really important because we need time to plan for the future of our town and there's so much uncertainty. And, um, you know, and just, I, I know that, um, basically that's it. I just want to say that we need to know that there's going to be transparency and that we can be engaged in a process so we could have town planning and with the potential that our school will be closing in the future. Um, and anyway, thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. Thanks, Ben.
Welcome.
Is there anyone else who would be interested in making public comment? Okay. Well, the thinking so far out there is, um, just to reiterate it, four hundred thousand dollars to get, to get us as close as possible to, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars of cuts. Four hundred thousand of that coming from, um, salaries and benefits, thirty-five thousand of that, thirty-five thousand of that coming from school-based budgets. Two hundred thousand of that being additional draw on the reserve fund and one hundred thousand of that coming from the facilities line of the budget.
Can I ask a really quick, but the school-based budgets, what is the total amount of school-based budgets? So we're not, we're not saying all school-based budgets are going to be cut and we're going to save thirty-five thousand. We're saying of the hundred and
We would divvy it up per school. We'd say like ten thousand per Montpelier schools and five thousand for Roxbury.
So it's a reduction in the school-based budget. It's not an elimination of Okay. No. We're not getting rid of
No, we're not.
I just want to be clear.
So for instance, what we could say, and this is just an example of what's in the school-based budget, right? One example, one principal gave to me today. Cause I said, give me, I know they're gonna ask for examples. So give me some examples of where you would think about this.
Yes.
Um, one principal said to me today, well, some of our field trips are pretty far away from school and they cost a lot of money to do that. Maybe we say, no, you have to do it within a certain radius of the school system to keep it within, you know, the X amount of dollars. Um, and so I can cut some of that money that's dedicated to field trips in that way.
Thank you.
Um, another principal said, well, our classroom teachers get this amount of money. I could cut that by a couple hundred dollars and easily get ten thousand dollars, right? Like in and the, what the district has provided to, um, those types of lines, like supplies and things are, is very generous over the years. So, um, so there are places that can be found. Um, but that again is a principal's decision. That principals run those. I don't run those. So I would trust that the principals would be um, working with their colleagues inside their school to, to figure that piece out.
Thank you.
But those were examples that were given to me today.
That's all. And were you asking Scott? Let's just, we just pick a school, ten thousand dollars from the Main Street Middle School, school-based budget is ten thousand of a hundred thousand dollars, ten thousand of fifty thousand dollars, just, and I'm just, I'm not saying you have to tell us exactly what Main Street Middle Schools school-based budget is, but just roughly. Just trying to, yeah.
I don't have it right here.
Okay, that's okay.
Okay.
I think, I think the take, yeah, the take home is we're not cutting all field trips.
No, 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 no.
Nor all school supplies.
Like there's still gonna be money for pencils and field trips.
Teachers were, were thinking about new textbooks. Um, maybe this isn't the year that we buy the new textbooks, right? Like, so there's those were the examples that were given to me today by principals, but it was not eliminate field. I don't want that message getting out there.
That's why.
Thank you for asking it then. So it's not eliminate field trips. It's more of, okay, you have, you have this amount of money for field trips. So you need to really be careful about where you decide to go because this is what you have.
And you have this amount of money for your classroom budget. So you have to make sure all the caps get back on the markers.
Exactly.
Cents or recycling program.
I see. Miriam wasn't thinking. I think they tried that.
So, oh, I got an example. So sorry, Miriam, hold on one second. Uh, like a school-based, one of our school-based budgets is two hundred and fifty thou, fifteen thousand dollars. Another school-based budget is four, four hundred fifty plus.
So we're talking about ten thousand from four hundred.
Yeah, you, another one is two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars.
Almost like we're in the future. Were you reading that out there?
I know, sorry.
But, Miriam.
Okay, um, would the appropriate time to talk about smaller renovations for the track the next week?
Yes.
Yeah.
Or, or maybe even after we land the budget.
But yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm sure Nathan would love to hear what you're thinking about too.
I just want to make sure we have that conversation at that point.
Yep, you betcha. You betcha. Um, any other comments on this current direction that the board is giving to Libby? Or questions?
I would just like to thank the board for a very thoughtful process and really good conversation, but it's not easy to have. So thank you. Not every board can do that. So I appreciate it.
Yeah. Here, here.
And more to come.
And more about comfortable. Right, right. Okay, that brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is, um, policy monitoring. Uh, we have two policies up for monitoring today, the board superintendent relationship, uh, which is A twenty-four and class size, which is D six. So I have a motion to approve those monitoring reports.
Smooth.
Sir, a second? Okay. Any discussion or questions? I have a couple of questions on the class size. It looks like our policy is a required policy.
Yes.
Does that mean it's the kind where the AOE wrote it and we adopted it?
No.
No. So it's required that we have it, but we came up with
Yes.
The language.
I will tell you, there are several boards of districts who are disadvantaged by one twenty-seven who are rewriting their class size policy.
So that they can have bigger classrooms and fewer teachers.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we are not doing that.
We are not doing that. I just wanted to, yeah, as evidence of you can change the
We can change this.
Policy. It's a mandatory that we have one, but it's not a written one by like lawyers.
Yeah. And this might be something, I don't know if Jim is on the plane by now. No, I still see him. That he could answer because he's been on the policy committee or maybe you, Libby, can. I'm curious to know, and it's okay if we don't answer this exactly tonight, but, um, where the numbers in our policy came from, if they're like rooted in some kind of best practice research or I see in our policy, it says recommendations by the AOE is one of the factors we considered, but I just wasn't sure how, basically how we came up with those numbers exactly.
And I know how the numbers were, were created.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jim. Yeah, Jim.
I, I don't either. And, and they predate my, um, they pre, they predate even me. Um,
Oh, I thought this was twenty eighteen policy. Okay.
It, it was, but we basically carried over the numbers from previous policy. Uh, I think it had something to do with what at some point teachers kind of felt was the like the, the sweet spot zone of manageability for a class where you have, you know, not too many students where for whatever age group, it becomes a management problem and you're not really able to give individual attention, but also not so small that there's not, you know, the opportunity for class interaction and, and good social dynamics. That's my recollection.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm certainly not at all tonight, or maybe even ever advocating for changing the policy. I, um, was just curious. I'm, I'm sure there is science out there that tell us what optimal class sizes are. And anyway, wasn't sure if we had it rooted in that. And then, um, why don't the class sizes apply to specials at the Main Street, at Main Street Middle School?
Do you know? It's not part of our policy. It's just, I think that the, I, the way I read the policy, it's really focusing on core content.
I see.
Which wouldn't be a specials when it
Got it.
Considered it. Although it is something that particularly at the high school, when there's so many, you know, Latin fours out there of what that, what that class size could look like. And I'm just picking on Joe in the audience, but, um, it certainly, I think it's something that they discuss at the high school level when kids choose classes. Can this class run or not? Or how is this class gonna run with a lot of our kids or couldn't run differently is my understanding of it, but Joe can correct me if I'm wrong.
All right. All right, thanks. Any other questions or discussion?
I just, is there most of the policy monitoring reports at the end, you report compliance? And so
Thank you.
I guess, I mean, the numbers are the numbers and so.
Oh, it got cut off. That's all.
Okay.
Sorry. Worry about, so we're all waiting to know, Libby. Are we in compliance?
We are in compliance with our class size policy.
Forgot about that. Thank you.
No signature at the top?
No, there's usually at the bottom. See how it goes all the way down?
Compliance or?
It goes all the way down to the bottom of the page. My hunch is, is that that was on the back of the page and I in a second and just the front of the page.
I comply with the numbers.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion or questions? Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay. I think the next item on our agenda is to adjourn. I'll entertain a motion. I move, we adjourn?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, Jim.
I have my, my plane doesn't take off till ten, so, um.
He was ready for a long walk.
Okay, we can keep going.
Yeah, I've, I've got nothing better to do for the next hour.
Jim, go get a good book.
Yeah.